Now muted, yeah?
Yeah.
No.
No.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
Let's see. Okay, good afternoon. This open meeting of the Board of Appeals is being conducted hybrid pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not, I'm sorry, will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Town and Antiquities Board of Appeals is convening in person and by video conference using Zoom as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that some attendees may be participating by video conference. If you're participating by video conference, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. All supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Okay. I'm going to call to order the regular monthly Town and Antiquities Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Today is Thursday, June 12, 2025. It is 1:04 PM. Would someone make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so John makes the motion and Lisa seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or online who has something to bring up to the board today that we are not going to discuss later on in the meeting? Anyone online? No, okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. So the next is approval of the minutes for February 19, 2025, and March 4, 2025. I would like to push that. Can we push it till July or August?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can shoot for July, but if we end up not, yeah, okay, thanks. Okay. So we're going to move on to new business. Our first item of new business has requested to continue to July 10, 2025. Would someone make that motion to 2000, it's application 2025-0014, Cludier, 40 Low Beach Road?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so John makes the motion, Lisa seconds. All those in favor of the continuance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Our next application was asked to request, they, sorry, they requested to withdraw without prejudice. Would someone make a motion to entertain that request to withdraw without prejudice for application 2025-0020, Willner, as trustees, 16 Codfish Park Road?
So moved.
So John makes the motion and Lisa seconds. All those in favor of granting the request for withdrawal without prejudice, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that carries. Okay, so our next application is 2025-0018, Brian Ryder, Eight Sandwich Road. Attorney Reed is presenting for the applicant. Is Arthur online and ready to go?
I am. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry, okay, hold on one second, Arthur. Mark Poore actually is present for the board and is on Zoom, just letting everyone know. Okay, so Attorney Reed, you have the floor. Oh, sorry, Joe Marklinger is on there too.
He's here there.
Oh.
He's right here. So should we, should we?
That's weird.
Why are you still on there?
Well, I was gonna stay home, then I couldn't get to work. So I zoomed over here.
It's working.
Zoomed.
It's working. Oh, you could've stayed home. It's nice that you're here. Okay, so Joe's in two places and Mark is on Zoom, okay.
You two both?
Yeah.
Okay, are you ready?
Yeah, that's good. Yeah. Okay, Attorney Reed, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. This is an application for a swimming pool and spa in the VR zoning district in which a special permit is required for these water features. The standard being that the pool and pool equipment must be separated by 20 feet from the lot lines and that the lot be full-sized or oversized in the zoning district and it meets all of those standards. Basically, it's a straightforward application of the type that you've handled many times before. And the conditions and analysis of it that are contained in the staff report are all acceptable to us and we would therefore ask that it be approved. Mr. Ryder is here and I believe that his architect Doug Mills is also in the audience and they or I can help answer any questions that you've got about it.
I have one question. I don't see the pool equipment noted on the site plan that we have in our packet.
The what?
The pool equipment.
The pool equipment will be in the portion of the pool house that is outside the 20-foot setback.
Oh, in the basement?
Yeah, in the, no basement, in the crawl space under the part that is outside the 20 feet.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Jim.
Is there a landscape plan for this?
Could you run screening?
What was that?
Jim's looking for a landscape plan showing the screening or revegetation.
I don't have one. The screening on the side behind the pool would be from the lot that belongs actually to the applicant's brother, who obviously has no problem with what's going on here. And we have HDC approval for it on the basis that it not be visible from the road at the time of the inspection.
Is there nothing there within that setback?
Well, nothing's been constructed yet.
No, I mean, is there landscaping between the two?
I can, I could ask.
Brian, do you want to come up to the mic and just identify yourself?
We have a comment on that.
Arthur, Mr. Ryder's in the audience and he's going to just comment on that real quickly, just if you can tell us that you're the.
Yes, good afternoon, board. I'm Brian Ryder and there is a plan, I don't see it on this screen here, that shows screening around the entire property. There's going to be a fence and large hornbeams along that south property line against my brother's property. The way it's laid out, I don't think there's another abutter that can actually see the pool visibly because the house screens the pool. Other than that, I just, I think most of you know the history of the neighborhood. There's five pools within the 300-foot radius of my proposed pool and there's a sixth one that was just approved by a director butter of my Eight Sandwich Road, which he's going to start construction on in the fall. I have a second director butter on the north line that has a pool. And there's, like I said, there's five within a 300-foot radius. After my abutter does his, it'll be six and mine will be seven. So it's a pretty common area, I think, for a swimming pool. It was always welcomed. I mean, we've been lug one for forever. It was only until we subdivided the lot from my brother and I that we agreed to go village residential and I was not clear on the special permit for the pool when we agreed on that one.
Is it possible to get a copy of the landscape plan for the record?
Absolutely.
I think we can request that if you can.
You don't have it on you via, even digitally, do you?
I can check my phone and see if I do. It's really not a landscape plan. It's the site plan that shows the bushes and trees around the property line everywhere. I don't have, I haven't gotten that far.
And the fence, I'm sure, shows up on the HDC approval.
No, it doesn't.
Oh, really? Because usually they would ask you to show how you were enclosing your pool.
No, they didn't ask for it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Or Doug Mills. Susan?
What? Sorry, what was that?
Douglas Mills and Billy Sada also.
Okay, let's, let's hear from Billy first.
Billy, are you muted?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Sorry about that. I just wanted to say with HDC approvals, a lot of times, they get, they get passed on consent with that condition that they're not to be seen in perpetuity. So it, not necessarily out of the ordinary if they didn't require something on their plan.
Okay, thank you. So typically, we do want to see, right? The screening.
Madam Chair.
But.
Sorry.
But, yeah. Guys, you, I, I can't see it here. You can keep telling me that, like, we just heard from Billy, so like, let's address that, then we'll move to the next person. So I think typically, we like to see, you know, the fence and the screening and all of that, so we know what it's going to look like after, but I, perhaps we can.
I actually, I actually do have it on my phone.
Okay, awesome. Hold on one second. All right, Nikki?
Oh, I had referenced the HDC number. I just pulled it up, the approval, and it shows the vegetation.
Great.
I can share with my screen.
Okay, that would be great. And then, do you want to see if that's, Brian, why don't you connect with Nikki right there and just see if you're looking at the same thing? If not, maybe you can email it to Nikki. Okay, while they're doing that, can you let the other man through? I'm sorry, I don't, I don't even see him on my list. What is his name? Oh, there he is, okay, great. Sorry about that.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
So I was just going to share that I do have, the architectural site plan does show vegetation. I assume it's exactly what Nikki is going to show you, so I guess I can just let Nikki show you as opposed to me sharing. There you go.
Great, oh, perfect. Thank you.
Why don't you just put that at the front of the board?
Although, that's, that's the original, sorry, that's the original approval, which showed the spa closer than 20 feet. So we've actually since then done a revision to that, which was approved back on May 20th. But the vegetation is essentially the same.
Okay, so maybe we can put a copy of the revised approved HDC with the decision and that would. Thank you. And sorry about that, Mr. Mills, you, you were, you were at the bottom of my grid and I just didn't, I didn't see you, I had to make it bigger.
That's fine. Would you like to see the, the follow-up plan or are you fine with just assuming that it's, as I said?
Do you have it readily available?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'd love to see it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Do you need something for me to be able to screen share?
I don't know. I'm going to move you over and then you should be able to share your screen at that point.
Okay.
Madam Chair. The only thing that I would request being included is on the plan, somewhere just showing that the pool equipment is going to be located in the crawl space of the pool house.
Oh, yeah, I just had a technical.
And in the portion specifically that's outside the 20-foot line.
Yeah, that was my question. I understand it's going to be outside of the 20 feet. Does it have to be if it's below grade in a crawl space? I always thought that that was if it was out in the open air, but I'm just curious. As for my own edification, I'm just, it's fine if they're going to put it below, let's just leave it that way.
I just wanted it noted on the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this, the revised plan is not stamped approved by the HDC?
We do, we do have approval for it. This is just the digital copy that we submitted. Yeah, it was approved.
Okay, so I think we'd want the one that's stamped approved.
Right.
Final plan approved, submitted with, or attached to the, to the application. Does anyone else have any questions?
There was one letter, but I'm not sure it's germane to this. It has to do with previous zoning. I don't know if we need to address it. I don't think so.
It seems like, sorry, it seems like the letter is more just a general question about zoning and practices versus the pool requirements for this district.
Nikki, did you, did you address those or questions?
Not as yet.
Okay.
Okay. But they can expect to get something back from you that addresses?
Yes, either from me or Billy.
Okay, perfect.
We shall to her.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, do, do we want to, do we want to take a motion to close the public hearing portion and go into deliberating? Oh, sorry. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak on this? Are you?
Patty.
Are you Patty? Okay, yes, that's what we were just talking about. So either Nikki or, or Billy in the plus office will get back to you about that, about your questions. Well, can you come to the microphone then and I can, you can identify yourself? So what we were saying was that your letter has specific, has questions that are dealing with greater planning issues and zoning district questions, not something that is really, has to do with the requirements for having a pool in this district. So those more general questions about process, policies, and procedures, staff will address to you in specifics to your request.
Well, because I do have a question that seems quite relevant in terms of.
Sure.
This is a separate zone. They have a spot zoning for this lot, so it's smaller than what the lots are in Monomoy. And yet you are applying, he's applying for a special permit based on a lot in Monomoy, but this is not a standard lot. So you're basing your decision on a Monomoy lot, which this is not a special.
I, I thought that the zoning was changed, so it's in the VR zone now, so it's a legal VR zoned lot.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Patty, right? Could you just identify yourself, your name and address, so we have it for the record? Okay, right, so this is.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. I couldn't hear a single word. I don't know if she can get closer to the microphone?
Okay. And Billy, can you just confirm this is in the VR district, correct?
Yes, it is in the VR district and I just, I do want to say this was not spot zoned. The zoning was changed per town meeting, per vote at town meeting. So the voters of this town changed the zoning there through the proper channels.
And in a VR district, a pool is allowed with a special permit if they meet certain criteria, which this lot meets. So if they, in the VR district, if a lot meets certain criteria, we grant a special permit with conditions.
Okay, so this is not considered a special sized lot?
It's, it's zoned VR.
It's considered VR.
Mm-hmm. And so in the VR district, the bylaw says that lots in the VR who meet XYZ criteria can have pool, can have a pool with a special permit and we don't have.
This pool falls within that.
Yes. And we, the zoning board does, the language is not, the language is that, as long as they, I don't have the exact.
We shall.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a normal size for Monomoy. So you want to put in a large pool on a smaller lot is what we're doing here.
Well, that's what it's zoned. I don't, I don't, I don't have, I don't know what your lot is.
Well, a special permit, you have to show that the, it's in harmony with the spirit of the zoning bylaws and will not be a detriment to the neighborhood.
So the minimum lot size in the Village Residential District, which is VR, is 20,000 square feet. This lot is 32,702 square feet on the plan, so it's not, it's not an undersized lot.
So it is within the zoning laws of Monomoy.
The VR district.
And yet they got a variance at town meeting.
They, I don't believe they have had a variance at town meeting. I think they had a vote at, I don't have their entire history and none of that is relevant. At this point, this lot is VR. VR is allowed to have pools if the lot meets XYZ criteria, which this lot meets. And I don't have it in front of me, sorry to tell you exactly what that is, but it's very clear.
This isn't, it is not the divided lot. It's a, it's a divided lot, right? But this is your, your areas that you spoke of.
Do you want to look at the plan? Have you seen the plan? Have you seen the plan where the pool is going?
Yes, from up there.
Okay, so I don't know how else to answer your question other than it is a lot of record, it's in the VR district, it's, it's oversized, it meets the criteria that is needed to have a pool and the bylaw allows for pools. We can put conditions on them, but not much else. We can't say if you, if he, if, if a lot meets certain criteria, we do not have the power to say you cannot have a pool in the VR district.
I'm agreeing with you in that it's got to meet certain criteria. My question is, he was given at town meeting the ability to take one lot and divide it. And I'm saying, is this lot a divided lot that we're giving all these, you know, variances to?
Well, that, that happened because the zoning changed. At town meeting, they changed the zoning in this district to be from, I assume it was lug one, and it was an oversized lug one lot, and then it got rezoned to VR, which allowed it to become two lots. So it's legally two lots.
So there's two lots and the pool is based on the divided.
One of the divided lots.
There's still.
Oversized.
Oversized.
Oversized, it's larger than my abutter on Monomoy Road, 11 Monomoy Road is a smaller lot than my lot.
Right.
Does that, does that make sense? Are we answering your questions?
Is Mr. Ryder going to live there?
I don't, whose business is that?
I don't think it's relevant.
Well, it is relevant in that if, if you're doing this to rent out because you have a large pool and all that.
That's none of your business.
That definitely goes according to special permit, you have to show that, that it's not a detriment to your neighborhood and from my standpoint and my neighbor's standpoint, having a rental property would be a detriment to the neighborhood.
Do you have a rental property?
Lisa, Arthur Reed has his hand up. I'm going to let Mr. Ryder's attorney speak at this point because these questions I think are outside the scope of this application and not something that we are addressing. We're addressing the, the conditions for the pool that he's allowed to have. So, Mr. Reed, can you?
Yeah.
Just try to speak up a little bit, it's a little hard to hear you. And you're.
Just to clarify the background of the situation, yes, this property was formerly in lug one zoning. It was rezoned to VR at the, I believe, 2020 town meeting. And in lug one, actually, which most of Monomoy is in, swimming pools are permitted as a matter of right on any lot that is not undersized. And even, even on undersized lot, the requirement that it be in a full-sized lot does apply in lug one, it simply must be that the lot is more than, I think, 7,500 square feet. In any event, the point is that this lot is a conforming lot in the VR zoning and the special, the pool, which is really the only issue that's before you right now, is permitted by special permit. We meet all the criteria. The conditions that are contained in the staff report are ones which are usual when the board approves a, a pool in the VR district. And I know I've, I've read Ms. Duster's letter and once again, there are a lot of misunderstandings in there that obviously there was no variance, town meeting doesn't grant variances, rather they rezoned the property. We're not asking for a variance today, we're not asking for anything that's out of the ordinary and the standards for special permit, as you know, are much more relaxed than those for a variance. And the other issues that she mentions in the letter are really irrelevant to the application. Happy to answer any other questions you've got.
Okay, thank you, Arthur. So if you heard him, before it was changed to VR, it was lug one and lug one pools are allowed by right and this lot was oversized for lug one before it was divided or, yeah, so he could have put a pool in there before. So.
Did not obey the 20-foot setback.
Yeah.
It would have been a 10-foot setback.
Yeah, and he wouldn't have any, he wouldn't have to come for any conditions. So it's actually more restrictive on him now that he's zoned VR than it was before the division happened or the rezoning happened.
But you're asking for a variance or a special permit, a special permit because it's oversized? I mean, there's a reason that it says in the bylaws, special permitting, the issue it needs to show that what they're asking for is in harmony with the spirit of the zoning bylaws and will be, will not be a detriment to the neighborhood. I, I don't, I'm not here to talk about having a pool or not having a pool. I'm really here to talk about the spirit of the neighborhood and you're putting a, you know, you've got a variance for a smaller lot, you now want a larger pool. And I keep hoping that this is not because, you know, it's a rental property and people will, you know, be in and out of there, which obviously you guys know a lot about in terms of this situation with short-term rentals, so.
But unfortunately, that's not part of the application. The use of his building is not something that's under our purview.
Well, except for the, in, you know, the statement is, it's in the spirit of the zoning, which is in the harmony of the neighborhood. So there's a reason that that was put in.
So for this, in the VR district, the Zoning Board of Appeals acting as a special permit granting authority may grant a special permit to allow a small or large swimming pool on a lot subject to the following criteria, criteria being met. I had said three, it's actually two. It must exceed the minimum lot size for the district, which he does, and the side and rear yard setbacks of 20 feet shall apply to the residential swimming pool and associated mechanical equipment. Further, 13930A goes on to say, "The special permit granting authority shall issue special permits for structures and uses which are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter, subject to the provisions of such chapter. Such permits may impose conditions, safeguards, and limitations intended to ensure that the use or structure is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter." So it meets the minimum lot size, he can, he, lot size, he can comply with the side and rear setbacks and the general intent of the bylaw is to allow special permits where, in the VR district where those two conditions are met. So it has been interpreted to us in the past that since this district, I think the first area was in Monomoy, I'm not here in Monomoy, in Matigat, and, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone on the board who was, who remembers, but if those two criteria are met, we are able to put conditions, but the pool is allowed. That is the spirit of the bylaw.
I remember that exactly because I do remember Leslie saying, "may" means "shall."
In this case.
In this case.
Right, because at first we thought we had more, more flexibility.
Exactly.
Go ahead, Jim, sorry.
Madam Chair, through you, I think the, the, the conditions are criteria. What's the criteria or list?
The criteria are the two, the, the two things that it must be over.
So the condition, we have a basically a standard set of conditions that we have that I think that covers what we feel ensures what you're concerned about with it being in harmony with the neighborhood. And we, we've built them in and tried to standardize it and, and limit noise, limit light and like we were ensuring. And like, we were ensuring that-
The screening.
That they're screening. So those are all the different things. I think we, you know, we're not rubber-stamping it, but we have this weird situation where we don't really have a flexibility, but we've certainly built in those criteria which hopefully are conducive to the neighbor.
Hopefully, good neighbors.
So, oh, we have to close the public hearing. Can I make a motion to close?
Is there anybody else who had anything? Billy, do you still have your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to say if Ms. Dooster has questions, I'm happy for her to come by the office, and I can discuss these items with her.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, so Lisa made the motion, and Alisa seconded the motion to close the public hearing. We'll have the five members vote, so that's Lisa. Joe, you're a full member, right? So Lisa over to Joe. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed. So what I heard was for the conditions, Alisa, you'd like to see that it's noted that the pool equipment is going in the crawl space under the pool house.
20 feet outside of the 20-
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the criteria that we have to do to it, but we can just note it, that it's out of the 20-foot setback.
Yeah, and if they can just add that note on the site plan. And then update the HGC information to the new C of A and submit that approved plan with the approved stamp for the file.
Yep, and then, does anyone, do you want me to read for the record the standard conditions?
Sure.
So if we vote to approve this, the finding is that the pool, the pool use and associated mechanicals are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw, and provided that the project meets the following criteria. "The lot must meet the minimum lot size for the district, and the side and rear yard setbacks of 20 feet shall apply to the residential swimming pool and associated mechanical equipment." So the board further finds that the modified proposal has met the standards as stated in the bylaw for the following reasons. "The lot contains 32,702 square feet of area in excess of the minimum required of 20,000 square feet, and the pool and associated pool equipment will be sighted in excess of 20 feet from any lot line." The conditions are as follows.
Here's some info about equipment.
Sorry. Great. "All chemical treatments of the pool shall stop three weeks prior to any draining or discharging of the pool. If this is infeasible, the owner shall engage a professional company to discharge the pool water in a tanker and dispose of it at the wastewater treatment facility. If a municipal water source is not available, the owner shall engage a professional company to fill the pool as needed. The pool shall not be chemically treated between November 1st and May 1st of any given year. The location of the pool, pool equipment, and landscaping shall be installed substantially as shown on the plan entitled Proposed Site Plan 8 Sandrich Road, Nantucket, Mass., prepared by Edward F. King Jr., dated April 14, 2025, a reduced copy of which is attached hereto as Exhibit A. No landscape lighting relating to the pool was proposed or approved, except for the lighting in the pool, as may be required for safety. In the future, any proposed landscape lighting related to the pool shall be reviewed by the board at a public hearing and shall be subject to a request for further relief. All work shall be done in substantial conformity with the certificate of appropriateness, HTC 20250111815, as updated and amended duly issued by the Nantucket Historic District Commission. An approved stamped plan for that certificate of appropriateness showing landscaping shall be attached to the decision as Exhibit B. And the placement of the mechanical equipment associated with the pool shall be under the crawl space of the pool house, outside of the 20-foot setback, and noted on the plan attached as Exhibit A." Is there anything else that we wanted to add or discuss?
Nope, not from me.
Okay, so with that in mind, is there a motion on the table?
A motion to approve with the conditions you just read.
Second.
Okay, so Alisa has made the motion. John has seconded. And again, we'll do from Lisa over to Joe. So all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Okay, so that's five ayes. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next application we have is application 2025-0019, Richard and Gail Valero for Spruce Street. Attorney Richard Boedet for the applicant. Rick, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rick Boedet for the applicant's, Gail and Richard Valero. The property we're discussing today is at Fort Spruce Street. It's in the RC Zone. For those of you who don't know where Spruce Street is, it abuts Marine Home Center property right across from Hatches. Property is pre-existing, non-conforming as to frontage. It has 37 feet of frontage in a district that requires 50. It is pre-existing, non-conforming as well as to sideyard setback. The home is 2.2 feet from the sideyard lot line in a district requiring five. We're seeking a special permit today to alter and extend the pre-existing, non-conforming dwelling by adding a second floor on this property, so that the additions will go straight up. There will be nothing any closer to the setback, but the second floor will continue to be within the setback, no more than 2.2 feet from the lot line. There is no new foundation going in. It's just going to be constructed right on top of what's there. And the purpose of this addition is the owner's son and family live on this property. They have four teenage children, triplets, and an older son, and it's time to get some additional space for all of them. So again, as I mentioned, we're going straight up in the setback. There's no new non-conformity. And this is not any more detrimental to the neighborhood than what exists there today. Every abutting lot is owned by family members, with the exception of the commercial condo on the corner. And it's my understanding, based on discussions with my client, that the neighbors are in favor of this. I can answer any questions you guys have, and I hope you'll approve this special permit.
Madam Chair.
Yep, I was just going to say, does anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
I just want a clarification. The plan that you included was dated 2003? So were these structures built long before that?
Yeah.
Pre-zone?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what makes them pre-existing, non-conforming. I think, I looked on the web GIS, and it was in the '60s, I believe.
And are there two fronts?
There are two dwellings on the property, if that's what you're asking me.
Does it front on Goose Pond and Spruce Street?
Yes, yes, it seems to, yes. And the one, sorry, and I should have clarified this, the one that we're discussing is the southernmost structure.
Who's your parking?
There's some parking in the front of the other structure and on the neighboring lot. These are all owned by the same people, the Valeros. So that's where they park.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but there's never been any formal parking on this particular property.
Can I, I'm sorry, you said it's not conforming as to frontage?
It's not conforming as a frontage because it has 37 feet on Spruce Street.
And it should be 50.
It should be 50.
So the official-
And it may have more on Goose Pond. If that, well, I don't know anything actually about Goose Pond, if it's defined as a street under our bylaw. I don't know. But in the extent of the-
But it's also lacking, too.
It looks like it, yeah.
I can't see the dimension, but it doesn't look, it's not going to make 50.
That's why I was asking about what is the front.
Is no driveway in Goose Pond?
It says cobblestone driveway. That's on a different lot.
Yep, yeah, partially on this lot, and then partially on the different lot. Again, owned by the Valeros as well.
I meant Goose Pond itself isn't driveway-esque.
You mean just, you mean the street? I, you know, I'm not sure.
I'm just trying to orient myself.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know if we have the aerial up there.
I just don't remember exactly.
There was no locust, so I wasn't-
Thank you.
And is, are there any wetlands?
Not on this property, but obviously.
On the lot that has the cobblestone driveway?
There are no wetlands, but there's wetland buffers on those. You can see to the north across Goose Pond, those are wetlands, right? That's this, just to orient yourself, if you've seen where they mowed down all the wetlands in front of the creeks, that's what's right across from Goose Pond.
I'm just assuming, I'm just thinking of how it's going to, the construction is going to happen, and where all the materials and everything would go, and where a dumpster would go, and that would not happen on, well, I don't know, where would that happen? Maybe in the cobblestone driveway that's-
What's the back house?
I doubt it. I think that it would, you can see that the Valeros own the property to the west there as well. That's where I think there's some parking as well, and it's open back there. It's where I assume it would go, but I think you're right, Alisa.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be right, probably wouldn't be room right next to this house.
Okay, got it, got it, got it.
Marine Home Center, problem.
And the only place that is getting raised is the back L. The front gable remains as is.
Let me-
It looks like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, to be perfectly honest with you, Lisa, it's a little hard for me to tell. I do have the approved, I mean, I submitted the HGC approved plans, but they might not be-
I don't have-
They're included.
They are, but the existing conditions aren't included, but you can see some photos of a-
Right, yeah, you can tell, the back part is the one that's really going up.
Yeah.
The northern part is already at least, you know, it's higher. You can tell it's at least a story and a half. It might be two stories. This is really to make the whole structure two stories.
Yeah, it sounds like, it looks like. I mean, they show a second-floor plan that shows only the back going up and a 768 square foot addition. Oh, no, wait, proposed third-floor plan.
That looks like it's going up, too, just based on the windows.
Yeah, it might.
Yeah, it's higher now, but there is, I do see a, I think we submitted, you know, sort of a footprint. So there is sort of a common room up on that.
And the one, can we?
The one picture that has like a tree in front of it.
That one?
Yeah, so it is.
The whole thing is going up.
Got it.
And it's compliant on the other side. It's, oh, no, it's, yeah, that's to the deck is 3.1.
And it's HGC-approved?
You know, these kind of applications, we get all the time. So you're going up, you're not increasing the footprint, but you are increasing. You don't have a floor ratio by law, but you are increasing the density. Now, this particular one, I don't care, but there are some of them that I think the abutters should have objected to the detriment to the neighborhood because of the increased density. You're going to have three more bedrooms or whatever. Nobody ever brings that up.
Yeah, and also, I mean, again, I think this is a unique situation, Joe, because of the joint ownership.
No, 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 I have no problem with this one. I agree.
Yeah, I was just going to say that the going up also is sort of, to me, kind of a light. I mean, it is more detrimental to somebody to have a two-story wall next to them rather than a one-story wall.
Well, and a couple of extra bedrooms, maybe, and more people and so on.
Yeah, no, I feel the same way, not with this particular one, but-
And those other, I remember a cab at the Lane.
It's not a slam dunk.
Were there any letters opposing?
No.
No, there's, so there wasn't anything.
Nothing in the packet was any mail that we-
Was there any letters of support from the relatives?
Just the checks that came into my office. And just to touch on, you know, what Joe has mentioned, I think, you know, it probably doesn't quite fit this scenario because the same family is just going to be in here. But just remember, right, I think, you know, I think you're right. Some neighbors probably would have those, some of those issues, particularly in the ROH. But remember, I think the state act, and I think even your local bylaw, doesn't allow you to regulate interiors. Right, so, you know, you only can regulate setbacks, ground cover.
But you can regulate density, I mean, not impact, right, in terms of-
Yeah, detriment?
Detriment.
Yeah, that's how someone could bring it up. But in other words, I don't think, I guess I'm just saying, I don't think you guys would be allowed to say, you guys can have two bedrooms, not three.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you could agree with a neighbor that it's going to be more dense, sure.
I don't have a problem with this application.
It doesn't sound like anybody does.
Okay, so is there anyone online? There's nobody in the audience, or, sorry, there's someone in the audience. Is there anyone in the audience or online who had anything to add? No.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All right, so Lisa makes the motion, and John seconds. Again, I'll just do it from Lisa over to Joe. If you're in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed.
Can I move to adjourn?
No, we have to vote on this. I'll make a motion.
Sorry about that.
Second.
I'll make a motion to-
I'm not even driving by myself.
All right, sorry, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit as requested with the finding that alteration and vertical expansion of the dwelling will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing pre-existing, non-conforming structure. With the conditions, the proposed alterations shall be in substantial compliance with the site plan submitted by the applicant attached hereto as Exhibit A. The project shall be, shall conform to the plans approved by the Nantucket Historic District Commission as evidenced by Certificate of Appropriateness Number 2025-03-12185. And three, there shall be no further alterations or expansion of the structure without additional relief from this board.
Second.
Okay, so Lisa made the motion. Alisa seconded. Then Lisa, oh, sorry, Lisa over to Joe. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that carries unanimously.
There you go.
And now, Jim.
Thanks so much, everyone.
All right, thank you. Very good, Jim.
All right, I'll reiterate my motions to adjourn.
Jim made a motion to adjourn. Someone want a second?
Second.
John has seconded. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you everyone for your time today. We'll see you in July.